This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Review Public Hearing for Tuesday, February 27th. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, I am excited that we are back doing our Brighton Believer Awards, and I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan to do tonight's presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Davis. Very, very excited to have some incredible people here tonight for us to recognize. Once again, we have been nominating people through the Brighton Believers Council. Anybody in the community can nominate an individual to be recognized for demonstrating the Brighton Believers' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. The award winners are students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, and community members. And of course, the nomination form is available on the website. We would encourage people to participate in that process. It's at bcst.org/believer. The first recognition tonight is our very own high school counselor and counseling coordinator of Brighton High School, Jenny Vigiani. Could you come on up, please? Mrs. Vigiani was nominated by Brighton High School student Laura Minimire. Could you come on up too, please? She wrote, "And never in her life has she met a more tenacious person than Mrs. Vigiani." No kidding. That is not a surprise. Mr. Lima, would you agree? Dr. Hall, would you second the nomination for that reason? Okay. But I would say in a pretty incredible way. We kid, but inside and outside of school, she assumes many roles. Some of these include mother, counselor, leader, and my personal favorite, friend. Removing her job as a counselor, you always know you can go to her for comfort. We joke about being tenacious, but we can also all relate to that as well. She's the shoulder to cry on, a voice to your problems, the provider for many things, therapy dog-related, and the sunshine on a stormy day. Other students may not know their counselor much, but I am blessed to know mine as well as I do. She was there for me during the good and the bad. She took time during COVID to Zoom with me. She listened when I lost one of the most important people in my life. She was here through the stress of college, encouraging me every step of the way. And now, she will be the first person I see when I walk the stage to graduate. And congratulations to you on that. You're very welcome. Brighton is my home, and Mrs. Vigiani helps that feeling to prosper. As a student, I often see people breaking the qualities of a broom, but not Mrs. Vigiani. She integrates these beliefs into her everyday life, seldom straying from that path. With her qualifications, she could have chosen anywhere, any school, but no, she chose Brighton, and for that, we are all lucky. She leads an often overlooked department elsewhere, but not here. Her broom qualities can be seen in everything she oversees and aids with. She prioritizes the mental health of the students and staff she helps. She saves many of our lives because of it. She's a silent hero who is often forgotten, but not now. I am honored to write about such an amazing person. She's a thinker, a leader, a world changer. She's a broom. That was really special. Thank you. Peggy Dempsey, could you come on up, please, along with Supervisor Mailey and Town Board Member Christine Carrato? Peggy Dempsey, an early morning walker and amateur naturalist, was nominated by Town of Brighton Superintendent of Parks Matt Beeman, Councilmember Christine Carrato here tonight, Recreation Director Becky Cotter, Supervisor Bill Mailey, also here this evening, and Councilmember Robin Wiltz. They wrote, "Peggy Dempsey, a former school teacher and longtime resident of Brighton, walks the Brickyard Trail daily and documents the beauty of the plant and animal life on the trail with a particular focus on the birds and shares the beauty her camera captures with her Facebook friends, anyone who follows the Friends of the Brickyard Trail page, and people of all ages that she meets on the trail. I enjoy them so much." So thank you for those updates personally. Peggy is among the original Trail Buddies, a group of regular trail walkers who made a friendly and enduring connection when their trail-walking habits regularly coincided not long after the trail opened in June of 2016. As a friend of the Brickyard Trail, Peggy is dedicated to the protection of the ecosystem surrounding the Brickyard Trail, helping to spearhead the Brighton Parks Department's Brickyard Trail Invasive Species Committee. Peggy was also the lead organizer of the 2023 Brickyard Trail Art Exhibition at the Buckland House, an event that drew works in a variety of media, all featuring the Brickyard Trail. The second annual installment of this art exhibition will take place in March of this year, and entries are being accepted through the Rec Department online program catalog through February 28th. Forever Teacher Peggy shared her birding knowledge with the community during the BioBlitz of 2023, an event designed for citizens, scientists to record as many species as possible in a designated location and time period. She is also a regular contributor to Brighton Rec programs, presenting on such topics as the Brickyard Trail, A Year in Pictures 2019, the Brickyard Trail Animal Neighbors 2019, and Curiosities of the Brickyard Trail 2023. With such generosity of spirit, commitment to community, and desire to share valuable knowledge freely, Peggy Dempsey truly embodies what it is to be a Brighton believer. Thank you so much for making our community a better place, and congratulations. And I'd like to invite Supervisor Mailey to also say a few words. Phil?
Thank you so much, Kevin. I can't begin to tell you how proud I am. Yes, I'm the supervisor of the Town of Brighton. But to be a Trail Buddy, to be a Trail Buddy really puts you in a special circle because that circle includes my friend Peggy Dempsey. I have learned so much about nature in general. I have learned about our trail. And if there's one thing that Peggy exemplifies, it's something I say all the time, and Peggy, you put a face to it, you make it real. Trails do not just connect places. They connect people. And thanks to the Brickyard Trail, I'm connected with Peggy Dempsey, our Brighton believer. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you to the board. Thank you to the Believers Council for giving this award to Peggy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, and congratulations to both Jenny and Peggy. As is the case with all our public meetings, we invite public participation. Is there anyone tonight who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll move on to the approval of the agenda. You all have seen the agenda. Any questions or comments with regards to tonight's agenda? No? Motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Eleanor, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
In regards to the minutes, both from the February 6th education meeting and the February 7th Capitol Project vote. Any questions with regards to the minutes from either of those sessions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen then?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't present for either.
Okay. Thank you. That'll be reflected in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to hear a budget update, and I think Lou Lima is going to walk us through the upcoming budget in just a moment, and give us an update sort of on where we stand. Lou?
Sorry about that. Good evening. Objectives for tonight's presentation is to, again, review the executive budget proposal and updated revenue projections, look at the final tax cap numbers now that we have all the information finalized, update on spending, preliminary spending. So we're still very much into the budget development process, so this is a snapshot of where we are right now. And then, Dr. McGowan will talk about community feedback and next steps. So this is the slide that we showed last month, looking at our state aid and what's proposed in the executive budget proposal. You could see the foundation aid is really the unrestricted aid that the district receives to support ongoing operations and incremental costs. And then we have the second half, about 35% to 40%, which is our reimbursable aids. So that's all based on spending. Spending in one year, you get reimbursed in the next year. And that'll be important as we talk about some of the cost drivers and some of our financing strategies, understanding, you know, future revenue sources. So you could see the growth in foundation aid over the last couple of years as the legislature committed to fully fund foundation aid. We're hoping through the advocacy efforts of the School Boards Association, the Superintendents Association, school business officials, that the legislature will restore the formula to what it's intended. And they have some caps in there right now, as they did in the past, overriding the inflationary adjustments that districts should be receiving. So we're hoping that's going to be positive for Brighton, and that we'll see more money when the budget is adopted by the state legislature. So a summary of total revenues. Again, you can see budget to budget or budget to preliminary budget, what the dollar difference is, what the percentage difference is, and then just to put it as a proportion to spending. So as we get new money, how much does that allow for increased, allow for new money, how much does that allow for increase in spending? So you can see sales tax, for example, an increase of about 3%. That would support 0.1% increase in new spending. So going down the items, you see a significant increase in investment income. As interest rates have increased, we're maximizing our investment earnings, we're budgeting for that. We're also being cautious about that, though, because that's likely going to kind of fluctuate as the markets change and as our rates of return change. So we're trying to capitalize on that to close, to close the gap as much as possible, but it's something we need to be thoughtful about long-term. Going down to some of the other big-ticket items, the increase in state and federal monies. We have an increase of foundation aid, which is about half of that increase, and the other half is related to reimbursable aids and that expense driven aid. So even though that's a 5% increase overall in revenues, it allows for a 1.6% increase in spending. As we're going to talk about with the spending pressures, I am recommending at this point to the superintendent that we think about using our reserve funds and use our retirement reserves to offset the increase in spending. And hopefully, as the state aid comes in in future years, then we can wean ourselves off of this short-term financing sources and have more sustainable revenue sources in the form of state aid. Then looking at the property tax, a 1.9% increase in property taxes. And we'll go through the tax cap calculation and what that allows for with the drop-off in pilot money. We have no more pilots. All of that money is going back onto the tax rolls, so that should help in the tax rate, but it doesn't help on the revenue side of things. That's about a 1%, provides for about a 1% increase in spending. So overall, preliminary revenues are showing an opportunity for a 4% increase in spending. When we look more closely at the property tax cap, we look at the components of it. An important part is this tax-based growth factor. So that's something that, should the property values be increasing, we would get an adjustment for that. Brighton is relatively mature community, so we're not getting any incremental property tax revenue in the formula from this piece of it. We then look at the change in pilots. So this year, we're receiving about $165,000 to $166,000. That's matured, so that's a drop-off. That allows us to increase the tax levy for that amount, understanding that it'll have a positive impact on the tax rate. And then what we've talked a lot about over the last couple of years is stability and this exclusion number. So we have $1.6 million is our debt obligations this year. And then we have a drop-off this year mostly because of the completion of the BOSI's project. So we have a couple thousand-dollar drop-off in exclusions, and that lowers our tax cap number below the 2%. So the 2%, the 2% tax cap, that's only one component of the formula. So we are allowed for an inflation factor of the 2% offset by those factors, those change in pilots and the change in exclusions are essentially our debt payments. So we're at a 1.88% increase in the property tax levy limit, which allows for a 1.1% increase in spending. This is our preliminary budget. I want to emphasize that it's preliminary. We still have a lot of work to do, but the preliminary numbers are showing an increase of 6.2%. These are the categories that the Board of Education looks at on a monthly basis: salaries and wages, benefits, BOSI's expenditures, supplies and services, and our debt transfers. So you can see the relative increase, and I'll go into a little bit more detail. So at this point, we're scrubbing the numbers. We're doing everything we can to find efficiencies to close that gap. About 2% is what we're looking at to close that gap right now. When you look at a comparison, revenues versus expenditures, we tried to summarize here where there's opportunities for increased revenue and compare those against the spending pressures. So again, we have foundation aid increase that's in the executive budget proposal. The tax levy, if we were to go up to the tax levy limit, new money that would be associated with that, increase in expense aids. You could see because of these spending pressures and where they're coming from, we're proposing an increase or to use our reserves, a million dollars worth of our reserves. Hopefully, then, the state aid will supplant that going forward. And then all of the revenues, investment income, sales tax, is this blue part here. When we look at the spending pressures, again, at a macro level, tuitions and mandated services, these are all in response to student needs and mandated services. Our normal contractual wages, rollover of our wages and our rollover of our wages and contractual obligations. Contract transportation, we'll talk about. We had to go out for an RFP this year, and that came back with over a 16% increase in transportation costs. And that's one of those reimbursable expenses that we need to front the money, and then we'll get approximately 60% back in state aid in future years. So that's part of the strategy to fund. So there's tuitions and mandated services and contract transportation, money that's required now, but we hopefully get reimbursement in the subsequent year. I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
Yeah, I just want to say, that's 1/6, a 16% is what you said.
16%.
Yeah, okay.
Which, I mean, unfortunately, that's a good number from what other districts have realized across the state, given the, you know, the infrastructure and the electrification of the buses. 16% is, hate saying that, but that's a good number for us, and we still have some competition in the region. Other areas where there is no competition, our consultants that helped us administer saw increases close to 70% in transportation costs, so.
I saw two on one of my circulars that I received, one at 69% that was downstate. Like, it's almost incomprehensible. So it's weird to say that 16% isn't bad when compared to the rest of the state. Part of this is, and everybody's been reading about this, we want to pay bus drivers more so that we're able to retain them, and there's a cost to doing that, and we want to have the right people transporting our kids to and from school and not have turnover there. So not surprising, quite frankly.
So if you look at, you know, the contract transportation increase relative to that bar, compare it to just the tax levy. That's pretty close to our tax cap number is, would just be eaten up by transportation costs. If you look at the increase in foundation aid relative to, you know, the mandated services and the contract transportation, is not keeping up with the spending pressures that districts, all public school districts face, and especially the circumstances that we're looking at this year. When we do a deeper dive into those object classifications, we can see increases. This is a slide that I showed before that showed the budget trends and the spending estimates in each of these areas. And again, we're looking at contractual increases as the number-one cause, but then we're also looking, again, being responsive to student needs and program needs. So those are all factored into our staffing projections, as well as the market adjustments for hourly wage employees, which is a significant part of our salaries, are linked to the minimum wage and the spending pressures in that, as well as the compression issues as minimum wage increases somebody who's been doing the work for 10, 15, 20 years, maintaining a fair differential from, you know, an entry-level professional. When we look at budget comparison for the unallocated benefits, health insurance, no surprise. We're estimating medical inflation to be about 8.5% to 9%. And that's driving new spending as well as, you know, participation metrics. That is offset, though, and you saw on the first slide, that benefits is relatively flat going into this year. The board adopted a new health insurance plan for our retirees, and that has saved substantial amount of money. Again, we offered it to our retirees, and over 80% of our retirees elected this new plan, the ATNA plan, with an estimated budgetary savings of about a million dollars. So better plan for much lower cost. And then you see the other benefit allocations that are tied to, generally, as wages go up, you'll see ERS, workers' comp, and TRS are all linked to changes in payroll, as well as contribution rates. So when we look at BOSI's and we disaggregate the cost drivers within BOSI's, the business and technology services, as the board is well aware, we've had to invest significantly in hardening our infrastructure and our systems from cybersecurity tax. We're also experiencing that as our software providers and application providers are also hardening their systems that cost is being passed on to us. So a lot of these, you know, this increase is $246,000, our cost of the services that we maintain, you know, our student management systems, our financial management systems, all of which are trying to keep up with the real cybersecurity risks that exist, and that requires hardening of their systems and an increased cost to us. The other one, again, as I mentioned, is being responsive to our student needs and the mandated services that are required, and that's in the area of special education. So those are things that we're looking at, and again, we're doing what's right for our kids and we're meeting their needs. The budget factors within supplies and services, just to highlight a couple of them. Legal fees continue to be a challenge, and we're trending up as far as our legal fees. Our utilities, we are seeing significant increases, just like we are in a home, delivery charges for our electricity and the actual unit costs. So we're doing everything we can to look at consumption and ways that we may be able to reduce consumption, improve sustainability within the district. But as of right now, that coupled with just the cost of, you know, custodial supplies, paper products, cleaning products, are all trending at a much higher rate than a 2% CPI. Insurances, again, those are also trending higher than the 2% CPI. When we look at programs, tuition, services that our students need, again, more costs based on the needs, responsive to the needs of students, and here's the transportation, $942,000, 17% increase, because as we have more needs and the more out-of-district placements, that requires more specialized transportation. So not only is our cost per bus going up, but we're going to need additional buses to support student programming that may be out of district. So with that, Dr. McGowan, do you want to take over from here?
Sure. You know, and I won't waste everybody's time walking back and forth, just simply to say to you, what we have to do next is really continue to gather information and feedback from each of the departments. We're reviewing staffing allocations right now and thinking about, as Lou mentioned at the beginning, that preliminary gap of over $2 million. And again, great emphasis on preliminary, right? This is the beginning of that part, and really making some hard decisions about where do we go from here? What programs have we implemented that we need to look at? You know, pruning so that we can plant other programs, making the difficult decision to look differently at the work that we're doing because we simply can't pass that entire gap on to everybody else. That said, we're hopeful for more state aid. We're hopeful that we can find efficiencies. We're not, this is not a doomsday presentation either. It's just a, we have to really fight hard to hold on to what we have and think carefully about what we would like to do going into next year. At the 7 o'clock meeting, I'll be talking to you about the community feedback, and that will help guide our discussions as well, looking at what we can prioritize and move forward. But we'll evaluate those proposals, the potential impact on program, and then continue to look for efficiencies within the budget, communicating to our community. Dan will be sending out communication this evening after the forum as well about the upcoming budget forums, where people can come and have additional conversations with us also. Excellent.
Thank you.
I do, Lou, I'm going to, one more question because you just touched on this, and I don't know that it's an easy question to answer. You talked about electrification. We obviously don't own our buses. We have a contract with First Student. Can you give like a sort of brief answer on impacts for whatever might happen there? A bunch of us who were at legislative session a few Saturdays ago got to talk to our legislators about some of the goals around electrification. Can you just touch on that quickly?
Yeah, so we are 100% contract transportation. So that's something we're concerned about is, you know, our providers' ability to invest in the infrastructure. First Student, I believe they leave space at the Ridge Road Terminal where we are right now, so they're going to have to have a significant investment into that terminal to be able to meet the mandate within the timelines coming through. So this RFP is really a five-year contract that we're recommending tonight. Over that five years, I assume that they're going to be building that infrastructure to meet the mandate, and then we're starting to turn over our buses from that 2027 to the 2035. That's going to be a real challenge to be able, you know, any new buses after the 2027 are supposed to be electric buses. They're, I think, three and a half times the cost right now, and there's still production issues with them. My biggest concern is the infrastructure, the charging stations, the electric. RG&E be able to meet the demand regionally for that. So really, these next two, two and a half years, we're going to need solid plans from our contractors of how, what's the investment, what's the timeline, because we want to ensure that we're compliant with the laws and the timelines that are outlined right now. I am concerned about BOSI's, so that's BOSI's, the BOSI's transportation that we utilize right now. They also leave space at their transportation area, and so they're going to need significant capital investment there that'll be passed on to the local district. So we'll probably see a capital component coming from BOSI, you know, that will put pressure on our tax cap as well, potentially. So we're going to see it on two fronts, is the next contract in five years is going to have probably all the debt service that's going to be required for that, the increase in the cost of buses, and then we may see a capital component too over the next five years.
And we'll just quickly say at our legislative session, one of the discussions we had is the bus manufacturers are suggesting right now, they don't see a way to hit some of the production demand that would allow us to hit some of the state goals. We passed that along to our legislators a few Saturdays ago, so.
Yeah, I'm hearing that loud and clear. First Student is passing it on. Again, First Student wants to do the right thing. That's our, you know, our provider that you see tonight, we're recommending for award. They're doing everything as a corporation to meet the mandate and to be responsive to, you know, the important initiative. I just don't know that they're going to have capacity and the timeline that's outlined by New York as of right now.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Lou. Dr. McGowan, you have?
Thank you.
Okay. Principal reports. Let's hear from French Road first, please.
Hi, everyone. We've had a very busy past few weeks at French Road leading up to the presentation tonight. So here's some pictures of just some of the things that are happening. One of these is, we've been talking a lot about wit and wisdom, and I just wanted to give a picture of what's really happening with the kiddos. Parents are seeing less work going home because so much of the work is being produced and consumed right in their composition notebooks. If you look here at this picture, one of our little girls is coloring her writing, and if you were to look really close, she's writing all about ocean sunlight. And you can see in this, they're working on topic sentences, they're working on putting all their details and also color coding everything to find out where all the information and details fit. It's really neat to see the kids learn about science, learn about the world, and also put it into the writing. And it was just a nice way to get a good idea of what's happening right in that classroom. February is Black History Month, and it's been a very busy month for our kiddos. Here's one of our displays outside of the library. It was more or less a sample for the classrooms. So over the month, each class was able to pick a different changemaker, and they put their own displays out in the hall. So if anyone's coming for Read Across America on Friday, I encourage you to take a little walk around the hall and see what's happening. If you look a little closer at this, you'll see a whole bunch of different things. You see our tennis court. We have Serena Williams is one of our changemakers. We have Frederick Douglass. We have Aretha Franklin. We have Stevie Wonder. We have countless different people. Some of our fifth-grade classes let each of the kids do their own research, so there's multiple changemakers outside of the classrooms. There's interactive boards, QR codes, facts, quotes, so it's been a lot of fun. So the kids are starting to walk the halls and really see all the work that the classes did together. As a faculty, we've gotten together twice since we've met last. Here, you're seeing the teachers work on different ways of bringing the classroom to the homes, using seesaw and different types of vehicles, just to show pictures of what's happening and learning. Katie Fawn, one of our instructional coaches, led that in our last faculty meeting. We've also been working a little bit on scope and sequence, and Mr. Lima was there as well to talk about our Capitol Project. Keeping school fun for the staff as well, we did celebrate Super Bowl Friday, on the Friday leading up to the Super Bowl. We had about 15 different crock pots of soup made by teachers and faculty, and we also had a little fun. We were doing rock, paper, scissors, and they're competing for each other's knucklies all day long, running around the building. It's a little different twist on checking your pocket, but the bottom picture on the right, the teachers are raiding the mailboxes of teachers who weren't participating and stealing the meat. And in the top, our teachers were duking it out for a stack of knucklies. So it was a fun way just to do something, keep everyone laughing, and kids had fun watching the teachers play as well. February is full of a lot of music. We did our pizza and jazz night, as well as we had a couple of different concerts. So it was a lot of fun seeing Mr. Dozier participate right there with the kids, doing the, I think they're doing the saxophone there. There was different grade levels at Fraz as well. I don't know if anyone was there, but it was a fun night for sure. Our mental health team is constantly working in classrooms. Recently, they've been spending their Bruins' time on bullying and working on the three Rs, recognizing bullying's happening, reporting when bullying's happening, and refusing to take part in that. So here is just a sample. is just a sample that one of our kiddos did, just showing what they were learning in the area of Bruins time with their mental health staff. Finally, was able to kick off our student council with our fifth graders. We have a lot of great ideas and a lot of changes these kiddos want to make at FRES in a short amount of time. This is our first time that we came together as a group. We had about 44 kids participating, and we're dividing them into two different groups. So, here they're brainstorming all the ways they're going to change the world, starting with FRES. So, some of the ideas were fun. Some of them are quite out there. So, we were able to scale back a couple of focuses. Some of the areas we're looking at right now are safety patrol, working in the habit, at the habitats, and also helping with morning announcements. So, if you look at this next picture, the student council members are just starting to be assigned their morning announcements. So, they're running morning announcements, they're running birthdays, and they're also leading our Black History Month changemaker quotes as well. So, the kids have been coming down every morning. They're meeting with myself and Maureen, the secretary. They're keeping me on my toes and on time with our 9:10 announcements as well, and they're very excited to be on the loudspeaker. Some more learning happening in the classroom. This is one of our third grade classrooms. They're doing their roly-poly hotels, and they're building different habitats here, and they're trying to figure out whose habitat was best for the survival of the roly-polies. The kids had a ton of fun. If you look close at the pictures, they're holding their little insect. They've got food in there, and they've all different shelters as well. So, I didn't really know what the roly-polies were at first until I got in and was able to see some pictures. And finally, things that are happening with the student and family experience. We've been working with Jeff Green on our transition plans for our second graders coming into third graders, as well as working with Yenial as our kids are going from fifth grade into sixth grade. One of the things we're looking at switching up a little bit this year for incoming second grader, or incoming third graders, is to have a bingo night with the kids. In the past, the kids have done movie night, I believe, and then they come back with parents on a second night in order to do the orientation. This year, we're looking at keeping it one night for families where the kids are going to be doing bingo. We're going to bring our student council kids in to help teach the kids about FRES, give them some tours of the building, and then I'll be meeting with parents at the orientation as well. So, we're hoping just to kind of simplify the night and really engage different groups as well. Our Read Across America starts on Friday, so we have lots of Read-A-Louds happening in the classroom. Some of you might be there as well. And then, looking ahead is bringing our kids from different buildings into FRES. We're hoping to do a partnership with chemistry and biology, where they're going to come in and do some lessons with our kids in mid-June. As far as engagements with families, the PTSA has been fantastic. We've had a lot of different events this year. We've done popsicles with the principal. We did our welcome back picnic. We had movie nights. We've been doing bingo. Grateful for that team of parents that come in and work with us each month. We're looking at doing something with Matt and May, a joint thing with our families for possible bedtime and books. So, we'll be talking more about that. And then, we'll also been working on our weekly newsletters, keeping communication with parents. So, we've been using Smore and Parent Contact. And then, the area of removing barriers within the blueprint, it's really been so helpful having Mike Moya work with us and getting all of our kids in for our morning activities and having morning transportation for before school. So, we're grateful for that change and engaging families with all those opportunities this year. Looking into March, a little bit more low-key. We have festivals of ideas this weekend. We also have our summer activity fair happening this Monday, the upcoming on the fourth, and then we have our Science and Social Studies Fair on March 20th and 21st. And then, we have report cards. So, it's been busy, but we're excited to be back from February break, and it's a really short window before we're off again.
Excited to be back from February break. I wonder if the students would say that. Great, great, great success on the student council, and also a ton of hands-on learning in what we saw there. So, really wonderful. Questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Let's go to Council Rock next.
Hi, everybody. So excited to be here today. It feels like a long time since we presented to you. So, lots has happened, just like Ms. Coggins presented. February is a busy month. Even though it's really short, it's really, really busy. So, we too have been celebrating Black History Month all month. Our first big day was the Friday that the high school and the middle school didn't have to attend school because of the water rain break. So, our high school students had to reschedule. They'll be coming on Friday for us, but here are some pictures that Dan graciously took of our middle school students coming to collaborate. So, they've been reading in our library, treating all of our students to great stories and great voices, I think, great role models for our students to see some of the older kids. So, and that's Adele Motzkiewicz, Jeff Green, and Dr. Malloy, who's helping with the transition and the transportation of our kids from the middle school and the high school this week down to our building. Along those lines, our second grade, so again, connecting to what Ms. Coggins was talking about, wit and wisdom, you're hearing a lot about that. But our second graders are beginning to engage in a civil rights injustices unit, and it's really deep. It's really rigorous. It started perfectly at Martin Luther King and has continued all the way through February. But this is one of our second grade teachers, Zach Coke, who's an amazing musician, and he worked with three or four different large groups of multiples. So, this happens to be Mrs. Giralee's class, as well as Mrs. Youngman's class, Mrs. Ourebex's class, and Mrs. Sayer's class, I think. Those four gathered, and they, part of the work was looking at the song Ain't Gonna Let Nobody Turn Me Around and analyzing the lyrics from that and connecting it to a lot of the civil rights work. Ruby Bridges is the next piece that's looking at that, looking at injustices, and brought them all together to sing the song and then talk about what they had learned in analyzing the writing. It's truly incredible to hear the in-depth, really thoughtful way that the kids are thinking about it and the conversations that are happening. So, we're really excited about the opportunity that that unit in particular provides and the timing of it. It's perfect. In our library, it was the time for our annual Council Rock Decot, so that mirrors the Caldecott Award. Again, Adele Motzkiewicz does the most amazing job of, A, she picks her favorites, but they end up mirroring a lot of the ones that the National Library Council picks for the Caldecots. And then, our students had the opportunity to vote, and the winner, second place, was Mr. S. by Monica Arnaldo, and first place was Evergreen by Matthew Cordell. So, the students were able to look at the pictures, hear those stories throughout the last several weeks, and then vote on which ones they thought should win. Music at our building, we've had a ton of guest performers. This was probably a highlight. So, we have Jill Davis, who's one of our music teachers, has been cultivating the talent that exists within our families. So, this is Kiara Duffy, who is a professor of opera at Eastman. She's also a parent of one of our second graders. She came and did a full presentation on opera. She sang. The kids learned what warming up was. So, in that top corner, one of her warmups was taking the water and gurgling through it. So, they did it. We ended up with a little bit of a water mess, because they were not professionals, but they learned. And they just were enthralled. It was wonderful to see the kids getting to experience this art that, I mean, I know I didn't get to experience until I was probably in college or beyond. But then, also their response to it. You know, I was a little anxious about how they might be as audience members. They were enthralled. She was fantastic. She picked really great pieces to perform for them, but also explain things to them. And to me, it's just another example of when we treat our little ones like human beings, they rise to that occasion, and they're, they were amazing, and they had great questions for her. It was, it was really cool. For Lunar New Year, we had a collaborative project with TCMS. So, this is a collaboration with Mrs. Katsatos' ELA students. There were several first and second grade classrooms that participated. The middle school students did some research and then shared that with our first and second graders to learn more about Lunar New Year, and this is now on display at Council Rock, all the hard work of the middle school students and former Council Rockers. So, the 100th Day was celebrated. Now, this is a particularly wonderful class. This is Mr. Benedict's class. So, there were people who didn't even recognize him. So, if you don't know Mr. Benedict, he usually has long flowing tresses of hair. People didn't know who it was. People actually asked me, who is that man that's coming in? And I'm like, look closer. And then, there's a star gentleman in the top corner, Mr. Charlie Bertino, who came in and all day, all he kept saying to me, Mr. Tappin', my back, my back. So, they took on that role. This was in celebration of the 100th Day, and it was just really fun to walk around. And that day, Dr. Rio and I walked around, and they aged us. There's an app that ages. And if you walk around Council Rock right now, there are a lot of classrooms that use this. And then, students wrote about what they hope for when they're 100, what they hope the world will be like when they're 100. So, I'm not sure about this. So... And then, believe it or not, I know it was 70 today, but when I put this presentation together, there was snow on the ground for the first time, and I was out capturing kids. They were having so much fun. We're hoping that we'll get at least one more storm so that they can enjoy the snow. They're building. They're just creative, and it was wonderful to be able to walk around and see all the kids. So, there was snow at one point at Council Rock. The student and family experience. So, one of the first things we did was change our curriculum night format to allow for more family connections. We've got a lot of partnerships going on with TCMS and Brighton High School. One is mentoring and internship. We have five or six students who are coming down weekly to work with our students. We have one kind of permanent internship that's working with a first grade in a kindergarten class. He's hoping to be an elementary educator. So, he's down, working with two of his former teachers. It's really exciting to see him back down at our level and how much he's grown and matured. We have our new student check-ins, so our counselors and our administrators are checking in. PTSA has also worked on family engagement and providing different opportunities. So, I'm loving that we're switching things up for our second graders going to third grade. When we started that four or five years ago, we didn't have any movie nights, so it was super special to go to French Road and have a movie night. Changing it to bingo, which is something we don't have, that changes it up for them because all of our kids got to experience a movie night if they were able to come. And we've got our upcoming open house and ice cream social, where we're looking to engage families. And just a fun, great night to be able to let their students be the ambassadors of the school and show them around. It's one of my favorite things about that night is the students are in charge, being the tour guides. And our school-based equity team continues to work on the sense of belonging for families and students and our staff. Upcoming, so, starting March 1st, really, it starts, we've changed this up. It used to be a day we came to do kindergarten registration. Now, it's an online and it's kind of ongoing. So, families are encouraged to start to register those kindergarteners for next year. Our PTSA Summer Activities Fair, again, trying to simplify things for families. We used to have one at Council Rock, one at French Road. We've combined so that they're all at French Road, and we'll alternate where that is every other year. But this year, it's at French Road next Monday, the 4th. Spring Pictures will take place. It's the first time we've done that at Council Rock. So, it's optional, but another opportunity to get a great picture of your child. Daylight Savings Time begins. Brighton Believes Day of Carrying is coming up, the 13th. We're really excited about that. I didn't have this on here, but the 14th will also be participating in the dodgeball. We hope to see everyone there. We will be defending our adult title and hoping to have a really great time raising money for the senior class. So, we hope to see you there. Report cards will be published on the 22nd, and then we have spring break. It feels like it's going to come really fast. Spring break and Good Friday, and then we reopen back again in April. So, any questions?
Just nice job of learning more about your parents, that we have an opera professor in our parent ranks that you were able to tap into.
Oh, we've got that. Next week, we've got a jazz specialist who's coming in to do a jazz quartet with his jazz. We're just trying to cultivate any, we've got so many resources here, and people are really excited and willing to come and share their talents with us, so.
Questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to make a comment. I think, listening to the changemakers at fifth grade, and then also all the projects at Council Rock, that you guys are making connections between different grade levels and community members and students at 12 corners from the school coming down to these grades to really teach the kids. Like, I absolutely love seeing that. I think it's such an awesome quality in this district. So, great job, everyone.
TCMS.
We had a very busy February as well, and I'm actually going back a little bit into January. And we held our Five Go Six parent orientation in the last week of January. I can't believe we were doing that already. We probably, we had quite a good showing, and student, or families got to hear a little bit about TCMS, but also learn about like the big crunch time, right? So, you've got to pick your foreign language that you want to study, and you've got to pick what music program you want to participate in. So, parents are, and students are filling that out right now, and what we're really trying to do is develop an all-inclusive, one-stop shop for families to go to with answers to all of their questions. So, we've built out a nice page on our website that we shared with families. You won't believe that Dr. McGowan offered the idea of using a thought exchange in my Five Go Six presentation, but it worked amazingly well. And so, we had that going, and parents came in, and they were able to scan the QR code and write in questions as I was speaking to them. And then, I was able to answer them as we were going on. And then, I also went back in after the night and answered questions more thoroughly and shared that back out with families. So, it was a super cool tool to get all of the burning questions that parents had at that moment answered. So, I appreciate that. We also had, just recently, our French trip to Quebec. Actually, now, they're starting to go in the winter more regularly, and I choose not to go on this trip because it is insanely cold. But it is a great trip. Mrs. Newcomer organized it this year for the students, and they did an amazing job crossing the border. Everybody gets nervous every year about what, how the students are going to react as we're crossing the border, but they always rise to the occasion and do amazingly well. They studied a lot of maple syrup, a lot of snow, a lot of dog sledding, and some history in there as well. So, it was a great trip. Everybody had a blast. We also had our third annual spelling bee at TCMS, and Elias took home the crown again for the second year in a row and is representing us at Regionals. So, that was super exciting, a nice tradition that kids look forward to. It was kind of neat this year because the sixth grade teacher started it thirty years ago, and they didn't know how much it would continue beyond sixth grade. But we had quite a few eighth graders and seventh graders who participated this year. So, it's nice to see that all students are participating. We also celebrated World to Job Day this year, and I think we were trying to figure out how many years we've been doing this for. I think this is like the 10th or 12th year that we've been celebrating World to Job Day. And what's really fun is to see all the students from VHS that come back and help, you know, dress students up and their parents that come as well. So, it's a really nice community feel in the morning. Lots of smiles, lots of hugs going on, and lots of curiosity from the students. What is this all about? What does it mean? Why are we doing this? So, it's a great educational opportunity. And we too have been celebrating Black History Month. If you walk through our halls, you see it in every single hallway, the celebration of different individuals who have made contributions. We've got puzzles in the library. We had, for the first time, at least since I've been here, an assembly celebrating Black History Month on February 14th. I don't know who brings the Schools to Watch folks in on Valentine's Day with two speakers for Black History Month, but it was a great day. We had Crystal Ellis, who of course is a mom of one of our sixth graders and is absolutely amazing. She spoke to both our seven, or sixth and seventh grade groups. She spoke, you know, to our sixth graders and then to our seventh graders, and you could see she was super engaging. She didn't just stand up and speak. She really talked about joy and kindness and empowerment, and it was a great message for the kids, and she just, she worked the room. It was, it was amazing, and the kids loved it, and they were awesome, and they made a nice big kindness chain on their way out. We also had Miriam Moore, who's the director of DEI for the town, of course. She came and spoke to our eighth graders, a little bit more traditional format, but I think they were just the right, just the right audience for that, because they were older and they appreciated her message and the more mature lens in their minds that that came through. So, it was great to have community members come in. We're also, this week, we have, if you look in the cafeteria on all of our tables, we have we have history, Black History tidbits for students. And then there's a competition that all of the homerooms are working through this week where they're creating a digital poster to celebrate something about Black History Month. So the homerooms are working together on that. So lots going on and a lot of enthusiasm in our building. We also had, we were lucky enough to be able to head over to Council Rock for, I think we had about eight of our students went over and read to their new friends. And it was really great to see how nervous they were beforehand. And I just kept telling them, they are going to think that you are gods. Like, it's going to be amazing. And they came back and they're like, they really did like us. So it was great. It's, you know, I agree. I couldn't agree more, Carrie Lynn, about the connection between buildings. Our students, the pride that they had when they came back of feeling like they made this connection and they had an impact. It was, it was really awesome to see. So kudos to Jeff for helping out with that and Matt as well. We, as part of our Black History Month celebration also, we had two Lits in the libraries. And one was a book called Boundless, who was about an Olympic athlete who was homeless and her journey of overcoming that. And then we also had another one with Mrs. DeBay, which was a text called How Do You Spell Unfair? And it was centered around a spelling bee. So it all kind of tied in nicely. But we had, you know, diversity of kids participating in those readings. We've got some cool things to celebrate at TCMS in the last month or so. Carolyn Bertner was recognized by the RIT Art Fair for her work. And it was really neat here to watch this because I think if you interviewed Carolyn, she would be like, well, I'm the non-artistic one in the family. And yet she was the one that was recognized by RIT with an amazing award. So kudos to Mrs. Carter for seeing that in her and entering the piece. And of course, Mom is there smiling and proud. We had Lila, who has joined Brickyard. And she was actually centered as a focus in the National CrossFit Social Media Page for a student who's engaging in healthy lifestyles and making great choices. And so it's fun to see her be a part of that, but also the confidence that she's gaining. She wrote a really nice piece in English class about what CrossFit has meant to her and how it has changed her life. And of course, that comes through from Mr. Wasserman and the work that he's doing in our PE program. If you don't know, this year, we switched in PE to allowing kids options so they can choose CrossFit. They can choose team sports or life fitness. And so Lila has been taking part in the CrossFit and really building up her confidence in that. We also had our Regional Science Bowl Competition where our team took third place this year. So they're doing great work and they've got another year together as a team to do great things. In technology, Mr. Elkins continues to play around and engage the students in whatever way he can. He's, you know, sneaking in all of that programming and that computer design in there. If you look at the left picture, the right, the blue is an actual Stanley water bottle. And then the pink is a CO2 car that a student designed to race. So just, you know, having a little fun with it. They've got some great new software that they're using and tools that they're using where students can engage in programming and then bring it to fruition through a vinyl cutter. And so that's what you see in the middle there. And the students were able to take those home and, you know, have signs for their rooms. And then, of course, the CO2 cars. We've got Connor Dickman is one of our student teachers right now. I don't know if you remember him, but he was a student here at TCMS. He's at Oswego right now for technology education. So he's bringing some great tools to the game as well. And then just other things that are going on. Picture on the left is just a group of eighth graders in Win playing games. It was a game day and that's part of our, you know, social emotional learning, our connectedness. And they love to call it Forced Family Fun Time. So they're playing a game and having fun together. At the top, we've got our eighth graders learning CPR in health class. I walked in, I was wondering why Staying Alive was playing so loudly. But they were all, you know, doing their compressions to the beat. Seventh grade science, exploring static electricity. This year, Mr. Shapiro and Mr. Montulli, who are two of our golf coaches, were trying to drum up interest in the golf program. And so we had a week-long putting competition before school every morning. And we found out that Mrs. Edmonds is a terrible putter. So, but that was really fun and a lot of kids. We had kids bringing their own putters into school. And I was like, seriously? Like, this is just a game? But it was a lot of fun. And then our sixth graders, we had a bunch of them that were able to meet Alan Gratz, who zoomed in, who's an author of some of the texts that our students actually read at TCMS. So two of the texts they read in sixth grade and then one of the ones that they read in seventh grade as well. So that was a fun activity. Our ESS students all cycled through each grade level, went to the Hall of Justice for their field trip. We celebrated Lunar New Year in our ENL class, but we've got a student teacher and TA in there as well. So they were all decked out for it. Another activity night has come and gone with sixth graders. A lot of fun. Parents always do an amazing job of setting that up. And then just a little fun, I finally found somebody who likes ducks as much as I do. So we had the same shirt on. It was pretty cool. And student and family experience, again, that kind of cross-building work that we're doing. We're having some high school students come down and work in mentoring capacity. Some of the athletes, some of the football players are coming down and working with our students. And that's, kudos to Michelle Peters, who's our new counselor at TCMS, had like hit the ground running and organized an opportunity for kids to connect with older students in a very positive way. So that's, that's really neat. We have an ad hoc committee that is really spending intensive time looking at transfer students, looking at data around the performance of our transfer students and finding ways that we can better support them next year and for the remainder of this year. We're doing regular check-ins, both at the building level and with Jeff Green, with our new families and also our urban suburban families as well. We are really leveraging the pieces that we've put in place, the MTSS process, CSE, Mrs. Crusano in her resilient specialist role and the Tutoring Center to really find ways to support our students who are struggling with school avoidance. It's a big thing right now. I was just reading some research while I was sitting there about the numbers and that we're really, we're looking at like 20%, I'm sorry, almost 50% higher in some cases than we were before COVID. So finding ways to support these schools or these students as they try to get back into school regularly. We're including our families in the creation of our MTSS plan and the things that we're doing with students who are trying to reengage with school. We continue to establish connections between staff and students at transition points. And we talked about students reading to classes during Black History Month. And as Colleen said, really working to refine those transition processes and procedures to support all of our students, but some key students between five and six and eight and nine. March, we've got Festival of Ideas this weekend. DC trip is around the corner. So we'll start meeting with parents. We've got our band concert on the 6th. Activity Night is coming in. Brighton Believes Day of Caring is coming. I can't wait for that. We've got a great plan this year. We have a meeting with the principal this month where Food Services is going to come in and talk all things food services because some parents have asked some questions about that. And we'll also talk about program planning for seventh graders. And then, as Matt said, we'll be on vacation before we know it again. Lots going on.
Questions or comments from the board? Can't believe the Festival of Ideas is this weekend. Let's see where most of the kids are in Brighton on a Saturday afternoon, go to the Festival of Ideas. Brighton High School.
Thank you. Nice job to my colleagues. Lot happening there. All right. It's not been since 2000 when Senior Falter and I actually accompanied kids to Spain, Sevilla. We have an exchange finally that has taken place. And they went to Oviedo. And when we first started to work with this school, they were here in the fall, visiting us. Had a great time during homecoming. And then we just visited them over the February break. Twenty-three students, three advisors. Maris International School in Oviedo is way up in the north. I've spent more time in the central, eastern and southern parts of Spain, but I'm looking forward to getting to Oviedo myself. They had a wonderful time. The school is fantastic. And I just want to thank the advisors, Nicole Baker, Suzanne Crowley, Rachel Olbera, for going on this exchange. It's a lot of work, a lot of students, a lot of responsibility. And also for the board and the district for still supporting all of our exchanges. Because I have to say, we're one of the only schools in the area that allows exchanges still after COVID. And just the responsibility that goes along with it. So thank you. You give our kids an amazing experience to be able to go. And that hopefully will, there's one of the pictures of the entire group, the Spanish group and our Brighton students. Wonderful time, certainly wonderful memories. And, you know, just again, thank you to the board for all your support with these exchange programs. We've had a lot of things happening over the last month with MLK Day and Black History Month. And this is one of the events. We took kids from our BSU, our Galaxy English 12, Lit and Literature of Repression classes and members of Trappizoid to hear Ibram Kendi, you know, incredible professor, author, historian for, he was the guest speaker for RIT's Annual Expressions of King's Legacy Speaker Series. And you can see right there above, Mr. Ennis, Vice President Lee there with us. She joined us, so thank you for being there. But the kids really enjoyed the presentation and talked a lot about it when they got back and just think that we could get a couple of our buses out there to take the kids. We also took students. I guess I'll give another shout out to the board and to Lou specifically for getting those 14-passenger bus vans. It's, without those, we would not be able to do a lot of these trips. So thank you for allowing that. Because we take these small, quick trips and we use those bus vans all the time. But Miriam Moore from the town asked us to bring a group of students. They were guests there at the Town of Brighton for their MLK celebration. Ben Apoku, the president of BSU, also gave a little speech talking about what Dr. King's dream means to him. And we also were entertained from the Schooly Arts with some wonderful music. But thank you to all of our students who went on that trip. Black History Month Assembly planned by our BSU. And they invited two guest speakers this year. Town Supervisor of Aronakoi, Andre Evans, and Rochester City Court Judge Constance Patterson. Both gave some wonderful words to our students. Also, our students at the end of that assembly were entertained by Wilson Magnet's step team called The Pearls. Say Yes to the Dress has been going on now for probably at least 10, 12 years. I'm not exactly sure how many years it's been happening. But that was another successful day. And if you don't know anything about Say Yes to the Dress, dresses, shirts, gowns, jewelry, ties, shoes, suit coats and all sorts of other clothing are donated. The volunteers that come, students can go. They get measured. They will fix each dress and tailor each pair of pants for the students and for their sizes by the end of the day. And hundreds of kids literally went through there and got some amazing clothing and taking home, hopefully to wear to prom and ball and other occasions. And I just want to give a shout out Carrie Crowley and Courtney Stern for helping to organize that, two of our counselors. American Red Cross Club continues to host blood drives. This one was the most successful one. We've actually had 55 units of blood collected. That was 11 units over their goal. And the American Red Cross, 55 units will save 165 lives. So students give up their Saturdays to help run the food area and check people in. Our Gender Sexuality Alliance had numerous activities planned during the month of February for Valentine's Day and just activities that students could engage in. Social activities as well as conversations. Mr. Winn has done a great job as the new advisor and planning lots of, again, fun events for all of our students, but specifically for students of the LGBTQ community. So just want to thank him and that group for planning so many wonderful activities. We also had an incredible guest, a music musician, similar to what Council Rock had. A little bit of a smaller presentation, but Sarah Gazarek joined our choir and not only performed, but spoke to them, taught them. It's quite amazing that she came. She just, her jazz group, Saj, just won for the first time, a female artist winning these awards. A Grammy for Best Arrangement Instrumental and Vocals with her vocal group, Saj. And there she is in the center, working with our students. Again, an amazing opportunity came up. Sarah talked to Tracy and I and just said, yeah, let's get her in. And we gave the kids an in-school field trip. And they had, again, something that so many other kids would die for. They just were an amazing experience. So thank you again for your support. FBLA, another incredible group of students. We had nine members who competed. They had, we had four first-place winners, second-place winner of the event. And students will be competing for the title in the New York State Future Business Leaders Championship in April. And these are some of those award winners. And Mr. Wright, their advisor. Don't know if anybody can guess who that is. SpongeBob. We had SpongeBob the Musical and just want to thank the cast. Amazing cast of performers. Of course, the stage crew, without them, we couldn't have the production. And of course, the pit band. So just an amazing show to all who are involved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The kids really were excited about it. I'm going to just, we're doing a lot to try to make our student and family experience more beneficial for all involved. But I'm going to just highlight the second to the last bullet, something we've been doing this year for the first time with the phone calls home to all of our new families to Brighton. They'll get two actual phone calls. And we have put Deidre Carter, who's one of our ASIs, on these phone calls with a script. And then she will answer all of their questions and then take notes for all of us. Administrators, counselors will call those families back. We've never done it quite this intense before and it's really paying off dividends. Lots of activities coming up, just like the other buildings, let's say. We're really looking forward to Brighton Believes Day on March 13th. Lots of cool events planned at the high school year about that next month. We have a pep assembly that was canceled on the day of the water main break. So we really didn't want that day off, Matt. We were hoping to be in school for that special assembly, but, you know, we just couldn't do it. So, sorry. But if you want to stop by, there's going to be all sorts of activities, not just highlighting winter sports. We're doing art awards. They're trying, the student council, something we've heard from students trying to make the pep assembly more inclusive of all of our different groups and students. And we're also honoring Joe Giuliano of Bagel Land for the first time of being an honorary Bruin. The kids want to honor Joe. If you don't know Joe from Bagel Land, he's an amazing guy. And so he'll be honored.
Questions or comments from the board? On behalf of the board, Tom, thanks so much. Ben was kind enough to invite us to the Black History Month Assembly and a bunch of us were able to make it. It was a great morning and we were so thankful to be able to be there. So well done on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Never a shortage of things going on. My thanks to all four of the principals for their update. Onto reports now. First, the financial reports, which will require our approval. The Treasurer's Report for the period ending December 2023. A Single Audit Report for the year ending June 30th, 2023. The Treasurer's Report for the period ending December 2023. I think I said that twice.[1738.28] December 2023. I think I said that twice. And...
I just tried to say it.
Yeah, that's okay. It's important. And the financial report for student activities at BHS and TCMS from October 23 through December 23. I'll make a quick note before we go to vote that members of our Audit Committee, Christina and Karen, also get a chance to look at those student activities committees through the lens of our auditors. So, really good thorough reviews in that regard. Questions with regards to the financial reports? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Kerry Lynn. All those in favor? Leila?
Okay, so for sports, the boys Alpine skiing won their first-ever sectional championship. And they also won... They also won the Monroe County League Championship. The hockey team had their Pink at the Rank event to raise funds for the American Cancer Society. As for clubs, Key Club is currently holding a sticker fundraiser to raise money for refugees this week. Brighton Mariwan will be attending their third conference of the year at St. John Fisher next weekend. As Dr. Hall mentioned, Black Student Union held a Black History Month Assembly with speakers Andre Evans and Constance Patterson. And Red Cross Club had their blood drive in collaboration with the American Red Cross. Asian Student Association held a Lunar New Year's Celebration right before February break, where students gathered to make paper lanterns. Teen Institute and Friends of Rachel collaborated to bring students together to have a fun cookie decorating and card-making meeting on Valentine's Day. And Girl Up will be hosting Speaker Sarah C. Rutherford, who will discuss her work with the Will of Domestic Violence Center. As for Executive Council, we held our second annual Winter Dance, which was a major success. We are also finishing up Last Minute Details for the Winter Pep Valley that'll be held this Friday. In other news, the math team held their last meet of the year, celebrated with a fundraiser at Five Guys. The sophomore class held a Valentine's Day fundraiser from the 5th to the 14th to generate class funds. District Strings is this Thursday at 7:00 PM. Students Owen Whitmire, Hannah Angola, Pay Day McGowan, and Marta Ross received the opportunity to display their art at Nazareth College throughout this month and until the 9th of March. And lastly, the senior class is holding a fundraiser at Chipotle on March 2nd from 4 to 8.
Thank you so much. Board of Education reports. First up is Labor Relations. I did attend the luncheon, which happened to be on Valentine's Day on February 14th. Topic was workplace violence. You know from past meetings that we've updated our policies with regards to workplace violence based on the new state laws that wanted to affect January 4th. Just quickly, it was a scary presentation when you have to consider all the things we have out there. I did share the presentation with both Lou and Teresa, so they have a chance to look at it and go through it. It's just something we're gonna have to constantly be vigilant for at all times in order to ensure the safety of our students. So, that was Labor Relations. Information Exchange.
I attended the information exchange on February 7th. This month's topic was regarding managing chemicals in schools. And listening to the entire presentation, I was very thankful that we have a Bosse's partner that does a lot of that work for us because she was talking about the dangers and also the difficulties of properly disposing chemicals. One being, which I was very blown away by, vapes are very, very difficult to dispose of, three different components. So, a lot of learning, but we have a great partnership with Bosse's that handles a lot of that work for our district. So, that was my attendance this month.
Thank you. Legislative.
So, I'm a little bit off-cycle here because I was away the first week in February. So, I was able to help prepare for the legislative breakfast, but I wasn't able to attend. But both Christina and Larry did attend, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything you'd like to mention regarding the morning?
I mentioned it briefly with Lou and Andy, his concerns about the targets that the state has put in place with regards to electrification of buses. And we shared those, in my case, with Jeremy Coney and Sarah Clark. And then it was, you know, a lot of discussions about state aid and rising costs and some of those things, particularly around transportation. We talked about that as well here. We want to pay bus drivers more, we want to give them a fair wage, so we have, you know, the best people. So, not necessarily new topics from my perspective, but we gave, in both tables, we gave great background to our legislators.
I also sat at Wade Norwood's table. I rotated through there, and we talked about sort of the pipeline for teachers, actually, teacher shortages, bus driver shortages. Yeah, so it was a good discussion. We actually had a student at our table who gave a lot of good perspective from her, you know, from her view.
It's an inside joke, but there was heat. That's good. I assumed there was no heat.
I don't think the association will ever live that down.
That's okay. It was well set up. And so, kudos to you and the team that prepped it, because everything went off very smoothly.
I'll pass that on to you, Thomas. And a lot of representation from, you know, the Assembly.
Yes, no.
The Senate, our Regents, they were all there, so.
That was really nice to see. And then Christina and I will be traveling to Albany on Monday with a group from Monroe County School Board Association and the Legislative Committee to meet with folks who actually aren't our local representatives. And while we had intended to speak a lot about the electric buses, thank you, and how it relates to the tax cap, we really had to switch our focus to the governor's proposed changes to foundation aid. And I don't want to say that I told you so, but we've been taught... Like, there's been that niggling doubt, like, we've achieved this great thing, we have full funding of foundation aid, but when does the shoe drop? What's next? And what's next is, everybody wants a piece of altering that formula, and the governor is the first to try her hand at it. And it's not, it's not really a good look for the formula. So, we have a lot of talking to do to folks about how that affects every school district in New York State. I mean, just from constructing our budgets and then looking forward to things like mandates for electric buses. So, that's a, that's a long road, I think, we're going to be on. Foundation aid comes back, friends. Yay.
Superintendent's Group will be there at the same time, so we're gonna meet up with you. And I know Lou was able to be at the breakfast also. We've been providing both Sarah and Jeremy a lot of feedback on the formula and exactly what the impact to Brighton would be relative to foundation aid. Thank you.
And we're, and we're one of the luckier districts in that the impact to us isn't super significant, but we have some neighboring districts who are facing a really hard road ahead with the elimination of Hold Harmless. So, lots of work to be done there.
In regards to Bosse's, I'll quickly note from our representative, again, very grateful that Mark Kokanovich, our former board president, is a representative at Bosse's for us. Their January 31st meeting included the mid-year board workshop, as well as approval of their Monroe One 2024-2025 school year calendar, sort of following along with the things we're doing as well. And their February 15th meeting included budget presentations and discussions on the proposed 2023-2024 budgets, covering support services, regional information, center operations, and instructional technology. Dan White, who's the superintendent of Bosse's, also spoke on behalf of his testimony at the New York State Bosse's and Albany Legislative Budget Hearings, which was on February 1st. My thanks to Mark for providing that update to us. They had some second reads also, but I know we're a little bit pressed for time, so I'm gonna keep going. Other board member reports. Kerry Lynn, I'll start with you. We'll work on the table this way.
I think the only other thing I wanted to mention was, many, I think all of us sitting here attended the Urban Suburban Celebration on February 7th, that Jeff Green and the Urban Suburban Crew led up to celebrate our seniors this year. So, it was really cool to be a part of that and interact with families and see the great successes from that program.
Thanks to Council Rock for hosting.
Yes, thanks for that, Chuck.
Eleanor?
That's what I wanted to echo to, was the Urban Suburban Night was just terrific. I mean, it was, it was nice to see them individually celebrated and also to be given their stalls to sort of recognize them publicly when they go to graduation later.
Greatly appreciated the kids talking. A few of the kids chose to get up and talk about their experience. Very, very honest and just really helpful to hear that feedback. Esther?
Hiring Practices Committee meets tomorrow afternoon. Curriculum Council meets on March 14th. School-based Equity Team for the High School met back on the 1st of February. And we are continuing our brainstorming to create a sense of belonging for the students. Through our surveys, we concluded that 85% of the students are linked to a sport or club, which gives them a sense of belonging. And so, now we want to focus on the other 15%. How do we get them involved? And we started brainstorming about exploring ways to use the homeroom to focus on different activities, celebratory events, maybe going over report cards or doing it, having them meet from particular tutors for study hall or something like that. But really, when we really talked about how to communicate with the 15%, we realized that we really need to go to the source and to find out from them, why are they possibly not connected to the school in some way, shape, or form? And how they, if they, if they do or do not have a sense of belonging. And we realized that a lot of the students are perhaps connected to sports and activities outside the school. So, it appears that perhaps they aren't connected, but they are in a different way. So, we are connecting, we're continuing to connect with the students and to continue to brainstorm.
Lot going on. Thank you. Karen?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Christina?
I have a lot of meetings coming up. Program Evaluation for Social Studies is this week. Policy Board is coming up. And actually, I think at Legislative in Albany, we're gonna meet with New York State School Board Association. Yeah, for lunch. Want to talk about priorities there.
Bunch of stuff going on with construction, with projects in process, projects in planning, and projects under discussion as part of our regular school OACM meetings. There's a lot going on there. And like Esther, I'll be at the meeting tomorrow, 3:30 for Hiring Practices. So, there's that. Nicole, BTA?
Thanks again for the opportunity for teachers to share some of the things we're doing. So, if you started Council Rock, this is amazing, first-grade writing. Mrs. Allen's first graders wrote formative pieces as part of wit and wisdom. They used the hamburger model. And they also studied Henri Matisse to come up with their art projects to go with their writing. So, really impressive work there. Kindergarten students from Missispiatus class, and I saw that this was already posted on the BCSD website. They worked with RIT to design a monster, and they came up with the traits. And then the RIT, based on a book that they had read, they drew a vision of what they wanted their monsters to look like. And then they worked, and a special talent, and then they zoomed with RIT students. And the RIT students created monsters for each kid that displayed their character traits and talents. So, that was really great. So, hopefully you clicked on the link. At FRES in science, students have been learning about groundwater and aquifers. They analyzed data from a satellite mission and then made PSAs using Canva. So, you can see some examples of their Canva PSAs. Ms. Harp's tech class finished keyboarding, and now they're learning about Neil deGrasse Tyson. And they're going to make a gallery walk again, using Canva and QR codes about him. Ms. Katie Covert is the roaming reporter at FRES. She's doing an amazing job of popping into classes. So, she went into Mrs. Hulphus' class, who were making little people for a project in the cafeteria with Mr. Tom. Mr. MacArthur and Mr. Bozak's classes were going over bar graphs and arrays. You can see lots of hard work. I just love the student holding his chin, thinking so deeply there. Mr. Appelinelp's third graders were learning text features and how to use those in nonfiction texts. So, again, part of our wit and wisdom. Mrs. French's fifth graders are working on their Changemaker bulletin board about Catherine Johnson. So, you can see students working and reflecting on some of the learning. The Jazzy January and Fantastic February at French Road, they participated in the Pizza and Jazz. They also had a jazz jam session at the end of the concert with a local jazz musician, Bob Snyder. And then the fourth-grade band had their concert, Hot Crust Buns, Twinkle Twinkle Little Star, and Hard Rock Blues, which you all probably listened to a few times. At TCMS, the following students were picked for the Junior High and Elementary All-County Music Festival. And a big shout out to everyone who tried out, whether or not they were selected. So, amazing group. At BHS, they had their January Art Show. So, students, any student who took an art class, and students in AP Studio Art and Portfolio curated, hung their own collections, and everyone got to display a piece. So, you can see some students in front of their art pieces. BHS students performed at the Urban Suburban Family Social. There was a saxophone ensemble and then duets. And what's amazing is, these kids are part of Wind Ensemble and BHS Jazz Band, and just sharing their talents, kind of like our parents do. Again, students who went to the Ibram Kendi event at RIT. And then AP Lit actually was able to take an overnight trip to New York City through a BEF grant, where they were able to see two plays. One of them was really fascinating. Actually, the students donned Plague Doctor Mask and then followed the, they went through... I know. They went through a hotel to actually kind of interact with the performance. So, what a great, what a great opportunity for those students. In Mr. Clement's World History, they did two different projects. One where they had a scramble for Africa simulation to kind of look at how the big powers interacted with the, with the countries, that they were kind of taking over. We couldn't get this link to work, so if I can get it to work, I will let you know. But they also participated in a Treaty of Versailles negotiation. So, really amazing things happening at high school. Thank you very much.
Nicole, thank you. And we're always taking the time to put together such a diverse set of different activities on top of the principal boards. It's just amazing what our kids are doing every day. Dr. Victoria Love is unable to be here tonight, but she did present a report. And I want to give Christina just a chance to hit a couple highlights, if that's okay?
Sure, yeah. So, the highlights really were from the 12 Corners Middle School PTSA report. They had a sixth-grade activity night. Some of the things were covered today. They had a meeting with the principal. Brighton Believes Day is being planned both for TCMS and the high school. And of course, Festival of Ideas is coming up this Saturday. And then for Council Rock, some of the events that we had, Fun Food Friday, which is always fun, with pumpkin seeds, Kindergarten Information Night, we've heard about that. There was a Super Bowl luncheon, second grade celebration. And then, I guess those are some, I'm just trying to hit some highlights. There will be a Summer Camp and Activity Fair on March 4th. And yearbook sales. So, it's, the sales link is active on the Tap and Times. And the next Fun Food Friday is March 15th.
All right. That's important. Thank you very much for that. We wish Dr. Love a speedy recovery.
Yes, and maybe we should do this one. Should I cover this really quickly?
Certainly.
The Executive Committee PTSA report is the Nancy Beck Memorial Fund. So, they reviewed 18 applications requesting over $43,000 in funds. They were able to fund 13 applications, which included a gaga pit, a motor space at FRES, a popcorn machine, the TCMS Courtyard, Brighton Believes Day, and others. So, thank you for that fund to continue to bring wonderful things to the school.
Nancy Beck's was absolutely outstanding. So, thank you. Dr. McGowan?
Just the report tonight that I'll share, the community will be posted online along with the budget presentation. One of the pieces of feedback that we'll share tonight is people looking for information about the budget, largely complimentary of the information we provide, but looking for links, et cetera, which it always is. And we just want to make sure people know that. It's always on the website, that material. Will be presented. That's really the focus of our work right now.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have a number of things to get through here. Approval of the second read policy. This is non-instructural, it's business-related, and that is for district investments. We had the chance to review this before. I didn't see any comments from anyone. Are there any questions with regards to this second read? Motion to approve? Moved by Kerry Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the approval of the property tax levy limit submission. I think I have to read this just to make sure. So, I'm gonna pull it open here. Please be patient. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District hereby approves the tax levy limit of $60,47,913, as calculated in accordance with guidance set forth by the state comptroller, commissioner of education, and commissioner of taxation and finance. This tax levy limit represents an increase of 1.88% from the 2023-2024 real property tax levy. We'll emphasize before we go to vote that this is the state mandated calculation. We don't have a choice on this, and that number is what's put together by Lou and the outstanding finance team. We are just approving the number that's mandated by the state. Anything you want to add?
No, I think you explained it really well.
Okay. Questions with regards to the tax levy limit? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is approval of the bond resolution for the 2023-2024 Phase Two Capital Project vote. This was the vote that was approved on February 7th. Our thanks to the community who came out in support of this initiative. This does require by our clerk, Kim, in line... This does require by our clerk, Kim, a line, uh, a, uh, individual member, um, response. Kim will go down and ask you for all your responses. Do I say motion to approve first, Kim?
We need to move that down.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta move it first and then we will call it yes.
Okay. So motion to approve the bond resolution for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Phase Two Capital Project Vote.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we go.
Okay. Larry Davis?
Aye.
Christina Lee?
Aye.
Karen Hatch?
Aye.
Eleanor Oi?
Aye.
Esther Winter?
Aye.
Carrie Lynn Bertino?
Aye.
And I'll note that Dr. Gasparino is absent tonight. So motion carries six and oh.
Thank you all. And again, one more time, thank you to the community for coming out to vote and passing at such a high, um, a high approval rate. Next up, approval of election workers for the annual budget vote and election on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Seems like we just did this because we did about a month or two ago for the February seventh vote. This is for the upcoming May twenty-first vote. Question with regards to this motion? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to talk about the agreement here for just a moment for a motion?
Well, really just that it's the most up to the negotiated agreement with that group, with the paraprofessionals group. There's not really any contest, I guess.
Okay. Um, approval of a memorandum of agreement between the Brighton Central School District and the Brighton Educational Paraprofessionals Association.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
A word of transportation contracts for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-nine. You certainly heard Lou talk about this in his presentation on the budget. We've talked about it from the electrification, uh, buses and the things coming. This is a five-year contract as Lou stated and there was competition as opposed to some other districts. Questions with regards to this contract? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll just make a quick note. A lot's going to happen in transportation over the next few years. It'll be important for us to keep the community informed. Grateful for, um, Michael Lloyd, Lou Alima and all that team that's, that's working through so many different things. Uh, next up, approval of professional service agreement. This is a construction management services for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Phase Two CIP. This is our contract with Campus Construction, who's been working with us for a while now on a number of our different improvement activities. I'm on this committee with the OACM. Uh, I'm a big believer in campus. They've done a great job by us. We've certainly had our battles with them at times on different issues, but they are great advocates for, advocates for us within the construction community. So grateful to be working with them. Anything you want to add to that?
No. Great partners. You described it again very well.
Uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think the next one's a duplicate.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So we're going to go around what is currently listed as sixteen and proceed to seventeen. Sixteen is a duplicate of ten. That's why we're going to do that, just so that's noted. This will also require a line item approval. I'll motion forward. The legal community and any community has different specialties and as firms pick up or let go of specialties, sometimes we have to make changes. In this case, state law and education law is a pretty specific specialty. Do you want to talk about this at all, just in terms of why we're doing this?
Uh, well, I'm trying to think of, it's not, uh, for lack of transparency. I want to be careful on how I say it because you have people leaving one professional organization, going to another professional organization. I guess the best way to describe it is we work with a particular set of attorneys, individuals who work for one firm, they are moving to a different firm. We would like to continue to work with those individuals. The firm to us doesn't matter as much, although it does have an impact. And their decision allows for them to work with different people within that firm and provide a variety of expertise. Bottom line, we feel really good about the people we work with and what they provide to the district. And we're essentially following them to that space because we feel good about their work.
Questions with regards to this resolution? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. And now Kim's going to require a roll call of vote.
Larry Davis?
Aye.
Christina Lee?
Aye.
Karen Hatch?
Aye.
Eleanor Oi?
Aye.
Esther Winter?
Aye.
Carrie Lambertino?
Aye.
I'll note that Dr. Gasparino is absent. Motion carries six and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for the consent agenda, we have a number, I mean, we heard about, I think, five or six different field trips tonight already. Our kids, um, travel, they see places and they learn things. It's something to be hugely proud of. A bunch of things going on under field trip approvals that you can see. You obviously saw the approval of, uh, I'm sorry, the listing of personnel changes and recommendations from the committee on special education and preschool, special education. Again, a number of different field trips. It looks like six of them, which is awesome. A bunch of fundraising activities. Doesn't seem like there's as many eating opportunities in these fundraising activities, which can be a bummer, but please support our kids as best you can. And finally, a gift is, is our, I want to, to read the gift. A gift from Dr. Ross Elkin to the Brighton Central School District of the many dresses, ball gowns, purses, belts and additional theater accessories. We're grateful for Doc, uh, to Dr. Elkin for that gift. Um, questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Quickly note, as we always do, our thanks to our clerk, Kim, for setting us up for everything tonight. To Dan Goldman, um, and to our, um, our video team who makes all this stuff work. Mike, Bill, our student Annalise Buck and Frank. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome. This is the Brighton Central School District Community Forum. Uh, our focus will be getting a budget review from the superintendent tonight and also hearing about feedback from the community, but we'll also entertain any other comments, uh, people want to bring up. We will begin the evening with Dr. McGowan just doing a run through on the feedback received so far with regards to the budget. Dr. McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, we did a budget survey, which we're going to walk through the results with you and the community tonight. And then simply ask several questions at the end for anybody present who'd like to weigh in and help us understand a little bit more about the information or any other feedback that they would like to provide to us. A very basic question, what else should we be thinking about? And then of course, uh, the remainder of the time is, uh, open forum for anything else that might be on people's minds that they would like to speak to. We launched the budget survey on February sixth and had, uh, two-hundred-and-eight responses to that from community members. A pretty well balanced relative to the caregiver community responding to that. Twenty-some percent across the board and then a much smaller number of staff members responding. And about twelve percent of the respondents were those that are community members that don't have children in school. I'd say this generally is a positive in the sense that, uh, staff input is really important to the work. It's important to thinking about the spending plan, the way it affects our staff. But it is also really important for us to be thinking about the impact directly on those who, most of whom are paying the bill. Uh, you have staff members that fall into both categories and they could actually check both. But for the most part, we're not looking for the survey to be swayed by one group internally, but rather be a reflection of what people externally are looking for and hoping for as well. Uh, we asked a different question at the beginning this time and the exchange was done differently. It wasn't a traditional thought exchange where people see each other's thoughts and rate them. In fact, this was done in a, in really the opposite way. It's a survey format and then we themed the data from there. We did ask a question about satisfaction with the work of the district. I think there's a couple of interesting contexts to think about. One is that likely people who are responding, um, are predisposed to either be extremely satisfied or maybe not satisfied. I think a lot of people that are in the middle are often moving past surveys like this and not engaging the same way, unless they're motivated by extreme emotion on either end. The other piece to recognize is that the passive responses, the forty-one percent, are a seven or an eight. In other words, one through ten, nine and ten were those that are satisfied. Seven and eight are passive. A lot of people would look at a scale of one to ten and say, well, seven or eight is a pretty high mark, but it's considered in this group passive. And then the dissatisfied make up twenty percent, which again is a concern. We look at that always and think, it doesn't feel like there's dissatisfied people all of the time. Recognize that not everybody's happy all the time, but that's a number that jumps out at you. When you break that down a little bit further, which I'll show you some of those numbers, you'll see, uh, that it's a relatively small number of people. There are only two-hundred-and-eight people responding altogether. But we'll look, take a quick look at that also. Um, in terms of the breakdown of participation, where people, um, describe themselves as seventy-six or thirty-nine percent were people that had participated in the arts, forty-six percent in athletics, clubs and activities, fifty-six percent. You could check more than one, by the way, as well. Thirteen percent had no additional activities outside the classroom. And eighteen percent said it really wasn't applicable to them as they're solely a staff member or a community member without kids in school. So they couldn't pick from those categories. In terms of that demographic, uh, question and which best describes connection to the district and then how that compares to the satisfaction score is an interesting perspective as well. The passive and the satisfied, uh, making up eighty percent overall. Caregivers at Council Rock, just eight percent rated themselves then as dissatisfied. And it gets, creeps up a little bit from there. Fifteen percent at French Road, eighteen percent in middle school and high school. If it says hidden to protect, uh, identities, because there are a small enough number of respondents that you could start to perhaps pick out who, uh, so it doesn't allow for you to see that particular number. What's interesting and something for us to be thinking about is this idea of sixty-six percent of respondents, caregivers at a parochial school or private school, um, rating themselves as dissatisfied. So they're not experiencing us every day. We want to probably drill into that. It's one of those things when you walk away from a survey like this and say, okay, now there's more questions for us to ask and ask specific groups of people. Well, I think we'd want to go back eventually outside of the budget process and ask this group, what is it that would satisfy you more? Now, it could be that people are choosing that alternative educational environment because they're dissatisfied, but it could also be that that's an environment that they've chosen for their family and they don't have any other services around us and choose to, to, uh, offer an unsatisfied response. Eight percent would be K-12 staff members saying they are dissatisfied. Like to know more about that as well. Uh, staff members at Council Rock and FRES did not rate in the dissatisfied category. Twenty-five percent at TCMS, thirty-eight percent at BHS. And again, community members without children in school, uh, twenty percent. Or, uh, overall, there are only twenty-two people in that category, I guess is the other point to make. When you look in the parentheses, you see the total number of people. And even that number of those in a private or parochial school, there were only nine individuals in total in that category. So sixty-six percent jumps out at you as sixty-six percent of people in private schools feel this way. No, sixty-six percent of nine people that, uh, jumped into that survey. So I want to keep that in mind as, as well. And, uh, relative to the demographic, uh, question, what activities has your family been engaged in? And then comparing that to the satisfaction score, it's interesting to me that sixteen percent in the arts, thirteen percent in athletics, clubs and activities, twenty-one percent. No activities, twenty percent. Uh, so a little bit higher if not involved in some of those others. And then twenty-seven percent, um, if the, they were a, a community member without kids at school or solely a staff member. And then the, the quick, there's a couple of different ways to look at this. One is this is a word cloud that just shows you visually the number of times words were mentioned in comments. And then I'll talk to you about the themes, uh, because I'm not sure how particularly useful this is. However, the what should we be prioritizing question, please share your ideas for what absolutely needs to be funded in the school budget. Clearly the priority in this community is academics. Um, you see a little bit smaller than that, things like arts or other opportunities, health, uh, support staff, additional classes, athletics, but academics jumps off the page just visually to you. Some of the ways that can, uh, we can analyze the results, I won't read all this at you. Again, this presentation gets posted for people to take a look at. Side A, so one group of people, uh, answering the survey really wanted to prioritize academics. That was most important to them. Side B, another group of people talked about other areas that they would prioritize and that was a significant number as well. Uh, mental health services, extracurricular activities, athletics. But the common ground were student support services. Both sides agreed on mental health services, special education, support for, uh, as they described it, disabled students. And they believe the services are crucial for well-being and success of all students. That seems to be a lot of commonality. Even if you were a group that was over here with athletics or, I'm sorry, academics, over here with activities, the common ground is we should be doing everything we can to support all children in the programs they need. The top five themes though for prioritization in terms of what did people say in those responses? What should we absolutely prioritize? Academic excellence and rigor, mental health support, teacher and staff support, special education needs and arts and extracurricular activities. So again, the top five themes, what should we be prioritizing? Academic excellence, rigor, mental health support, teacher-staff support, special education, arts and extracurricular activities. The second question we asked was where can we be more efficient? What are your ideas for how the district could reduce expenses? And ultimately people said costs and reduce costs. Energy, buses, uh, looking at those items were, were big for people in terms of, again, visual representation. The top five themes, reduce administration costs. Energy efficiency, cutting back on extracurriculars, streamlining communication and reevaluating transportation. So those were the top five efficiency considerations that were offered by the respondents. And finally, what suggestions do you have for the district in terms of how information is shared and gathered during the budget process? People were really big on email, which is interesting because that's also something that people tell us we send too many emails. Uh, but the point was that people were making in this process was mailers that in their mind are expensive, counterintuitive to the budget process. And email sent us information. There were a lot of comments about posting presentations, information on the website, all of which, to be very honest, we do. But it's evaluating, how do we get that word out and make sure people understand that we do that? Not saying, well, we already do that. Uh, really just saying that we need to figure out the right way to make sure people understand that that's what's available to them. And how that's presented on the website is important, really thinking through the efficiency of that, uh, tool and how people get to the information. Do they have to take multiple clicks to get there? How do we make that really jump right out at people and be an efficient mode of communication? And the top five suggestions people made for information sharing were communication methods. Uh, again, social media, email, also some physical mailers. They said that the budget newsletter in particular is helpful, but they didn't want a lot of additional physical mailers. Transparency and clarity, community engagement, having things like budget forums, which we have multiple scheduled. Dan will send the information about that out tonight. Uh, providing budget information, clear and comprehensive budget information. And then a variety of feedback and suggestions, uh, around more in-person forums, early information distribution, educational opportunities, um, were also all important. There was somebody that actually suggested, uh, mailers and email are bad. We should go door-to-door and present budget information, which might not be, um, entirely physically possible. But that was also suggested. Uh, I think that was Lou trying to just suggest that I have to go door-to-door. Maybe that was it. Yep, that was it. Uh, finally, we also asked, do you have any other thoughts, questions, comments or suggestions, uh, that people would want to share? There were a lot that said no. I like what's going on. There were less responses when you get to the last question. That's not uncommon. And people were there to answer budget questions. By the time they get to the end, they maybe didn't have as many things to say. However, uh, from there, school start times was mentioned again, a topic we've talked about many times. Uh, was just one of the topics. When I list it as number one, that is not in a hierarchical order, uh, but rather just listing for you the things that were mentioned. We of course will review that again for years from now. We've put that after multiple committee reviews and recommendations in a place where we are willing to review it again, but at a time period when it becomes perhaps more feasible financially. That was really the big stumbling block for us. Uh, school programs, there was a theater program, uh, request at French Road. More career exposure for high school students. Suggestions around the school budget, taxes, the high cost, um, inflationary concerns, constant increase in taxes. School facilities, multi-use of existing spaces, need for security measures as well. And then student needs and development. Designated recess time at the middle school and high school was something, uh, that was suggested multiple times. And more athletic activities for sixth grade. Of course, athletics don't start, uh, the modified level until seventh grade. And this idea of prioritizing kids in the middle as well, that there's a feeling that kids receiving a tremendous amount of support are funded well, kids receiving a tremendous amount of additional activities or opportunities are funded well. But what about everybody else? And making sure that there's equitable distribution of resources across the board also. So our questions and hopeful anybody can give us feedback tonight are really these. What are your thoughts? What should we be considering and what would you do next? I'm going to leave the podium, uh, join the board and then Larry was just going to ask people if they'd like to come up and share their perspectives on this or any other topic that might be on the board.
And I think what we'll do is we'll have them come to the podium right where you were.
Will they do the budget presentation?
We just did. Oh, no, I'm just doing, yeah. So this is the time for anyone in the community who would like to come up and speak. We only ask that you give your name and, uh, where you live. Don't have to give a street address, just the town you live in. And we're happy to answer any questions, whether regards to the budget, the budget feedback received or anything else.
Hello. My name is Seth Weinstein. I have three kids in the Brighton School District. Generally speaking, I think the school and the district does a great job. My question is one of safety and public safety concerns, and particularly in the light of violence at protests recently in 12 Corners area, and I appreciate Dr. McGowan's letter that he sent out, and I would hope that the board would strongly support action to make our town more safe, regardless of political issue. It really doesn't come down to that. It's a safety concern. In my eyes, and I think in the eyes of a lot of families and parents, we consider 12 Corners almost as an extension of the Brighton School Campus. High schoolers can go, come and go as they wish, as they please, and telling them they shouldn't go because of political rally, I'll tell you, my 16-year-old, the first thing he did is he went there. At that rally, there was no violence, fortunately, but when he found out about the next one, he said, oh darn, I wish I would have been there. And of course, as a parent, that's not what I want. And so, as elected officials, I believe that, and public school employees, I believe that your number one priority is the kids' safety, and I would like to hear what you all are thinking to support safety measures with respect to this. Thank you.
Seth, I really appreciate that comment. I'll just say on behalf of the district, and then certainly wouldn't want to speak on behalf of the board, but say on behalf of the district that, similar to what I wrote, our concern is really about timing, right? So the topic, the, whatever the issue may be, is not anything we were weighing in on. And I'm not, I'm not running for that conversation. I'm happy to talk to anybody about that because I've certainly gotten some responses from a variety of people. Our concern is entirely the timing of people being in that location. And to your point, I guess I'm just reiterating your point, we would be supportive of any measure that could help with that. The idea that people, and I don't want to repeat the whole letter, but are protesting at 12 Corners, to me, as a citizen, I think is great. Again, I'm not talking about topics. I'm just talking about the idea of people exercising their right to free speech. I love the fact that my kids are raised in a community, personally as a dad, where they see people participating in democracy in that way, but when we release kids at that hour and there's more traffic and just, just more humans in that space, it's a concern for us. We feel like we have a responsibility for kids until they get to your door. We can't, once they go off the property, do a whole lot, right? But we feel a sense of responsibility regardless. And the idea that activities would be happening in that space that could be a potential safety risk is a real concern for us. So some of the specific items that have been mentioned by members of the community that have written to the town, I don't think are necessarily our purview to get into pieces around a town code or around restrictions that are that governmental body's responsibility, but as a general matter, absolutely supportive of any thing that can be done to think about timing for those things and the safety of kids. I will say the town and the police department have been really great partners for us in that, in doing what they can in that moment to keep kids safe, but certainly timing is the biggest consideration for us, for sure.
I'll speak as an elected official on behalf of the entire board, but certainly allow that the board can add any comments as well. Our number one priority is the safety of our kids, so that's easy to understand. You said something, I think, that's very important, because there are times when it feels like Triangle Park or whatever it's officially called, is, does feel like an extension of the schools. It's town property, and we don't have any control directly or indirectly over what happens there. I'm grateful for our security team that was there, you know, on the sidewalks, trying to do their best to stay within their bounds. I know that the supervisor is looking at different potential solutions and trying to figure out what can be done, but half of our student population between the middle school and the high school, as you pointed out, Seth, walks through that area. Not all of them do, but a majority of them walk through there. It's a social place for them to go over to the, to the little mall there and everything, so we have significant concerns. And I hate to say we'll continue to monitor the situation because that seems like a tried answer, but we'll do that, and grateful to Lou and Teresa Moser, who's in charge of our security, who are looking at a bunch of different options to make sure that we're doing the best we can on our property where we have direct control to take care of some of those things. But it is frightening as a parent to think that there's, you know, altercations happening a couple hundred feet from your kids, and we're going to continue to work with the town. Dr. McGowan pointed out that the town, both the police department and the government, have been good partners for us, but this is a tricky situation, and we'll continue to focus on the safety of the students and listen a little bit to Teresa Moser and Lou in terms of what are the steps we can specifically take as we go through some of those things. It's a very active social center in our community. It's the center of our community, so we're going to be extremely vigilant and just try to be on top of things and prevent as many things as possible. The timing of that was awful, and it didn't take the kids or their safety into consideration. That's probably the most frustrating thing for me. I don't know if anybody wants to add any other comments?
No, the only thing I would add is that I, I want to say that I hear you and that I, I too am frustrated that we can't offer you more than de facto and de jure. That de facto, yes, it's an extension of our campus, and de jure is not our property, and I, I wish that we could, I wish that we could do more in that sense, and I just, I want to say that I empathize a lot with how you're feeling about it.
I appreciate you pointing out our staff that was there, Lou, Teresa, but our principals and security staff, people that were on their turn out too, so thank you. I did not see that clearly. Thanks, Seth.
Other questions or comments about anything budget or school safety or anything? Anything else you would like to cover?
No, I don't know.
Any other comments from the board?
No, I was going to say, should we stick around for a few minutes if people wanted to come up?
Yeah, so great suggestion from Christina Lee. We're happy to stick around for a few minutes. Do we officially adjourn this, or is it a form?
It sounds, yeah.
Okay, so once we adjourn, we'll stick around if anybody wants to have individual conversations. We thank everyone for tonight's attendance.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.